I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council, August 6, 2018, to order. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise and ask Councilman Forrest Fleming to lead us in the pledge.
Join with me if you would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
I'd like to call on Reverend Dana McKim, First United Methodist Church, if he would please lead us in an invocation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. A privilege to be here tonight, and I'm also very grateful and thankful that you invited me back and that I actually remembered to come this time. I was awarded this little trinket today. This is a plate that commemorated the building of First United Methodist Church in 1953, but they've actually been around for longer than that. We Methodists are mobile people. Apparently, I understand, they held two or three different locations before they finally ended up where we are. And I am so honored and privileged not only to be a part of this community, but to serve that congregation. I have loved my first year being here, and I just want to say as a citizen, thank you to all of you. You have a hard job. You put a lot of hours in that folks don't know about. I know that firsthand, and we appreciate you. Appreciate what you do. Gracious and mighty God, we give you so much thanks for all that we celebrate, all that we have, all that we are, all that is in our lives as a result of your good grace over our lives. We thank you for this community in which we live and for the way so many have given themselves to the service of this community for generations, even to this very day. We thank you for those who serve us in this community, for our council, for those in public service, for those in our Public Safety Department, for those in our utility departments that do so much to make our lives better and safer and more comfortable. We ask, oh God, that you would pour out your blessing and your hedge of protection over each and every one of them as they go about the duties that you have given to them through the offices that they've been charged with. We ask now, oh God, that you would open hearts and minds, that we might see clearly your will and your way as our community seeks to build a stronger, better, safer place for each and every one of its citizens, not only the ones who are here now, but for the many that are coming. For these things, we thank you for, and for this opportunity, we thank you. In the name of all that was and is and is yet to come, let God's people say amen.
Thank you, Dana. I'd like to introduce our council to my far right, Wendy Kato, City Councilperson. Forrest Fleming, Mayor Pro Tem. Lou Vena, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, City Council. Chris Hawken, City Council. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community. Under Public Advocacy Issues and Strategies, we have a program to talk about tonight, the Faith-Based Identification Program. I'd like to call on Francisco Rizzo to the deus, if he'll make that presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having me, inviting me here today to give this presentation. I also want to echo Reverend Dana's comments about my gratitude for you being here, for all the hard work that you do, and for inviting us here for this forum to be able to address matters of public interest in this way. I know some of you, some of you might not know me. I just wanted to give you just a brief introduction about who I am and why I'm here before you. My name is Francisco Rizzo, and I have lived in this community for 20 years now. It's hard to imagine, when I think back when I moved to Morganton, I guess, God, that was 20 years ago. That was before I had kids, before I was married. I was 27 that year. And I came to Morganton to work. I was living in Hickory at the time. My family and I, originally from Chile, have been living in Hickory and moved to Hickory in 1989. I moved to Morganton in 1998 to work for a church-based organization that was coming here to work with the growing Latino community that had been moving into this area by that time, going around 10 years or so. So with that early work, it was a nonprofit work, and our work primarily focused on helping that growing community to adjust to life here in this new environment, to understand what the customs and norms were, and to navigate life in this new era, something that we've been doing in Burke County going back a number of years. It'd be interesting to see how the Waldensians, when they came to eastern Burke County, adjusted. What I'm doing here today, what I've come here for, is to speak about this program. It's called the Faith Action ID Program. And again, just for a little bit of background, when I started working this community in 1998 with the Latino community, and several other people in Morganton and in Burke County have been doing the same thing ever since then, too. We've gotten to know a lot of the families that have come here, that moved to Morganton, just like the story of every immigrant community, for better opportunities, for opportunities for work. People have worked very hard, and very, in a lot of times, the most difficult jobs to work here and to build a new life for themselves and a new life of hope for their children. And being here 20 years now, it's been amazing that we've been able to see how that community has grown, people who were born here in Burke County, and how they've been able to go to school and excel in a lot of the ways that their families probably never would have had the chance to if they had stayed in their home countries. Everything was developing well, I think, with that community until the September 11 bombings, 2001, where a hope for a lot of immigration reform that was happening in this country, there was a lot of movement towards helping people to become legal residents of this country, kind of took a backseat after that terrible tragedy, when a blanket, I think, of security was put on the whole immigrant community, regardless of who they were and what opportunities or what they were bringing to this country. We've seen since that time, things become increasingly difficult with that community, particularly in the ability to obtain any kind of government-issued identification cards, which includes driver's license, which include any kind of government-issued ID. And so subsequently, we've had situations where hard-working people, people that are going about their daily lives, going to work, taking their kids to school, going shopping, contributing to the economic development of Burke County, are sometimes stopped because they are not eligible to receive a driver's license, and subsequently are taken to jail or receive other kind of legal consequences for the fact that they cannot obtain a legal identification card. This problem has affected immigrant communities and other folks throughout North Carolina. And in 2013, a nonprofit church-based organization in Greensboro called Faith Action International House came up with the idea of working in cooperation with their local law enforcement agencies, the Greensboro Police Department, the Guilford County Sheriff's Department, to issue a non-government form of ID called a community ID. Okay? So this identification card is not any kind of government-issued identification. It does not give anybody who possesses it any kind of access to benefits, to anything that you would have by having a government-issued ID. In effect, the community ID does not have any more legal standing than what my ID here is, that I use for my work as a chaplain at CHS Blue Ridge. But what it does is that working with local law enforcement, what is being done is used as a tool that local law enforcement can use to identify people when they're pulled over, if there's some kind of a traffic stop, if there's any kind of reason for asking a person who does not have access to a regular ID. If they're able to produce this community-issued ID, then local law enforcement in diverse communities across North Carolina have agreed to accept this as a positive form of identification, thereby saving a trip to jail, saving the police's responsibilities, and having to deal with somebody who was arrested for not having an ID, all kinds of bureaucratic issues that can come up when you have to stop somebody for, you know, for innocent, for a nonviolent types of offense. And so in 2013, Faith Action International in Greensboro began working with the Greensboro Police Department and in issuing these IDs. And we want to bring that here to Morganton. I had a copy. Anyway, I'm going to read just briefly from this information packet about what the Faith Action ID does. And this ID, by the way, has started in Greensboro and has now been used in many other communities in North Carolina, to name a few. In Greensboro, in Winston-Salem, in Durham, Chapel Hill, Carrboro, Hillsborough, Ashboro, High Point, Burlington, Graham, in Alamance County, Elon in Alamance County, Meban, Gibsonville, not sure what county Gibsonville is, anybody knows, Roanoke Rapids, and as well as Aiken, South Carolina, and as far as Cincinnati, Ohio. And the latest community, the first community in western North Carolina that has agreed to start issuing this ID is in Boone, and in June 30th this year, they had an ID drive. So just briefly, what is the ID? What is the purpose of it? The purpose is to build greater understanding and cooperation between local law enforcement and other local sectors of our diverse community. The goal of the ID is to create a safer, more inclusive, and united community for all. What does the ID do? It provides cardholders with a reliable form of identification that can be used as a tool by law enforcement, city departments, health centers, schools, businesses, and cultural arts organizations to better identify, serve, and protect us. And I just want to add that in May of this year, May 24th, we had a meeting, a public meeting, held at St. Charles Catholic Church, where the Director of Faith Action International came to explain to a really diverse representation of Morganton, including representatives from the school, administration, from the hospital. Mayor Thomas was there, the police department was there, sheriff's department was there, a lot of folks, to explain what this ID is and how it's used. And overwhelmingly, everybody there thought it was a good idea. It was a good tool. Why is it needed? Because many community residents, including many citizens, don't have the necessary requirements to receive a state-issued ID card or a driver's license. They are often required to prove their identity for numerous reasons each day, and without a reliable ID may not be able to identify themselves with local law enforcement, receive urgent services with schools, health centers, city departments, and social service agencies, or participate in the cultural and business life of their community. So who has the faith ID card? It's available to any resident who may have limited access to a government-issued ID card, as well as those who support safer, more inclusive, and united communities. And so I come here before you today to explain what this program's about, and to let you know that through our conversations, it seems we have a lot of support in the community for this, in the community for these ID cards, and that we would like to, as early as possible, invite this organization to come here and to start issuing these ID cards to members of the community who could use them. And if it's okay, I'd like to distribute. I have a handout with more information. I'd like to distribute.
Let's do questions first. I have a couple. The cost for that program. Is there a cost?
The cost of obtaining an ID card is $10, and it's a yearly, it's a yearly fee.
Okay. Available to any age children? Could it be for children, or?
Available to people 16 years old or older.
And they need to prove who they are with some kind of identification when they come to sign up, correct?
Yes, two forms of identification, something showing a photo of themselves, and another one showing proof of residence in this area. So it could be a bill, it could be a paycheck, anything like that.
So it wouldn't be used to, say, turn on city utilities? That's a government ID, so we couldn't use that to get city services like that, just for identification, correct?
Yes. I'm not familiar with any official uses that this ID has beyond just an agreement with local law enforcement, and with agencies, too. For example, I work in the hospital, and so a lot of times, we run into problems with people not being able to properly ID themselves. But if they're able to present this ID, and we know the source, where it came from, we know how it's been vetted, then the hospital would be able to accept an ID.
Any other questions from City Council? We thank you for presentation. If you'll give us that information, please.
Thank you very much.
If you'll give it to me, I'll pass it through.
Yeah.
I'll just pass it down.
May I approach the bench?
Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you all very much.
Next on our agenda is some recognition for one of our employees, Jesse James. I believe he's in the audience. If he'll please at least stand for the people in the audience to be seen. He's our senior planner, and I believe he is now certified zoning official designation. Is that correct, Sally?
That is correct.
We thank you for your service and glad you're on with us.
Thank you.
And I'll ask Philip Luckadoo to make some comments then, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Jesse has completed the requirements by the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials to be a certified zoning official. To do that, he had to, in addition to his experience, he had to participate in a three-day course for zoning practice, and then a seven-day intensive course for zoning certification, zoning official certification, that culminated in an examination, which he passed. And what that is, is the course is designed, or quote, "is designed to help students develop administrative skills in reviewing plans, inspecting sites, enforcing ordinances, and providing service to customers." And then part of what he will be doing is upholding the goals of the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officials, which is to further the public understanding and awareness of zoning, and to see that private citizens and officials are more accurately informed as to reputable practices and interpretations of zoning problems involving the administration and enforcement of our zoning ordinance. And I can tell you, in the short time that he has been here, he has done just that, and to include taking Board of Adjustment members to training courses, to attending training courses with Planning and Zoning Commission members. And we always encourage furthering education and certifications and whatnot. So Jesse is on that track, and we'd like to congratulate him and again welcome him to our team.
Great. Thank you so much. You're next up on the agenda, actually. Philip, if you'll stand at the lectern. We have an announcement of a meeting change. The Planning and Zoning Board has published a notice of change of meetings from August 9th to August 16th. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any special reason for that?
We are bringing some text amendments to the City Council, or to the Planning Commission, and then ultimately to City Council. Of importance or of note is, they're all of importance, but of note is a ordinance to officially allow and guide how food trucks are allowed within the city. And so in order to accommodate scheduling and get the folks here that are necessary to talk about food trucks, particularly within the central business district, we needed to move that meeting to the 16th.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And that will be at 5:15 PM.
In this room?
In this room.
Okay. Thank you so much.
We had an approval to use food trucks.
Next, we have an announcement. We have a very important new member in our community, Tanya Stevenson. Tanya, I'll ask you to come forward to the lectern. Tanya is our new executive director and president of the Burke County Chamber of Commerce. She started on July 9th. She was executive director for the Salvation Army Boys and Girls in High Point before she came here. She's a graduate of High Point University. She was named Businesswoman of the Year from the High Point Chamber of Commerce, and we're so excited to have you in the community. And I know you're working hard, doing ribbon cuttings, and meeting new people. Would you like to say something? This is Tanya Stevenson, our new president and CEO of the Burke County Chamber.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to work with all of you guys. And if I haven't had a chance to spend some time with you yet, I hope to get to do that. I thoroughly enjoy getting to know Sally, and Sharon, and others in the city. And I'm just really trying to spend my time getting to know everybody and learning about Burke County. But I am really thrilled to be a part of the Burke County community, and look forward to partnerships with the county and city and the Chamber of Commerce and all that we can do. And yes, ribbon cuttings are happening. Had one at four today, got several more this week. So it's an exciting time to be in Burke County, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to be here and to serve this city and the entire county and our business community. And if there's things we can do at the chamber, please let us know. If I haven't had a chance to get to know you, please call me and set up a time for us to spend some time together. Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Under upcoming events, a comma, resurrection, which is a Journey Tribute, a tribute to Journey, will be Monday, August 20th, at 7:30 PM. Our farmers market continue on Saturdays and Wednesdays. And I'd like to share a story with you. This weekend, a young boy, about eight years old, came up to me and asked if I was the mayor, and I said, yes, I was. And he said, you know, at Christmas time, you lower, you have this little switch, you turn on the Christmas lights, and they all come on. And this weekend is a meteor shower, and I want to know if you can turn that switch off so the lights will go dark, so I can see the shooting stars. I've talked to Brooks Kirby. He says there is no switch where we can turn all the lights off at one time. So if he's watching, that's my promise. I told him I'd get an answer. We will not be turning off all the lights Saturday night in Morganton to see the shooting stars, so.
We might could get a squirrel to help us.
Yeah. Unless we have squirrel activity. Okay. We need the consideration of changing our City Council meeting date for September. Sally, would you cover that, please?
Yes. September 3rd is the first Monday, and that is Labor Day, and a holiday. And so would ask that you consider moving our meeting from the 3rd to the 10th.
What's wish of council?
Motion to change the City Council meeting date from September 3rd, 2018, to September 10th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sally, North Carolina Municipal Power Agency, do we have an update?
I just thought about something. We don't have the festival on here.
Oh, is there a festival gonna go on?
We won't be meeting again before then. It just dawned on me when we said the 10th. Okay. So the 34th, 37th, 30-something, 37th Historic Morganton Festival will take place on September 7th and 8th, Friday and Saturday, downtown Morganton. Be there, play in the streets, and whatever else we're saying about that these days. Come look for Gus, the groundhog, right?
Okay. Back to Municipal Power Agency.
I don't know how we missed that. That must be Freudian. I'm not really sure. Power Agency. The Rate Committee is starting their work this fall, looking at rates for next year, and they'll be starting meetings early, looking at several things, so that we can have numbers for next year's budget. The Annual Meeting of Electricities is August 20th through the 22nd in Asheville, and Brooks and I will be attending that. That's all I have for that right now.
Okay, great. Under considered agenda, I believe we have seven items. If you'll cover that, please.
I believe we do, and would ask that you all consider adopting those in a single motion, unless you wish to have something taken off the agenda and discussed separately. And for those of you viewing at home, that includes minutes from our regular meeting on June 4th, from the special meeting held on June 18th, where we adopted our budget, tax releases in the amount of $790.25, a $10,000 budget amendment to receive the final payment of donated funds for our Community House project, and to reimburse those to our Capital Reserve Fund, a resolution adopting the 2018 Updated Water Shortage Response Plan, commonly referred to by us as the drought plan, the drought management plan, something we do not need in the last few days. Also, consideration of some shifts in some pay ranges and position changes that you agreed to during the budget process. No budget amendment required for that. Adoption of updated bylaws for the Burke Partnership for Economic Development, commonly referred to by us as BDI. We have changed those bylaws, and all the member entities of BDI have to adopt those bylaws, changes. We included those in your packet, and they're all very routine in nature. And finally, a resolution regarding the city's position on the petition to close a portion of Old Jamestown Road. That is a state-maintained road within the city limits, and the state has been asked to abandon right-of-way over there, and we are asked to concur with that.
Okay. What is the wish of council? I'd like to take A through G, and then vote on the resolution as a separate, if that's okay? Because we need a motion for the resolution, correct?
Well, if you adopt the...
Say that to me one more time.
All the consent agenda, A through G, are recommended actions, but under the Jamestown Road, there's a motion. Do we need that motion separate?
I don't think you need to, because if you adopt the consent agenda, you're adopting every item in it, which would include the resolution. But you can certainly vote, obviously want to vote on it separately, that's fine, too.
Okay.
You mean A through S?
A through the consent agenda. Okay. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes, including the Jamestown Amendment.
Okay.
The motion, yeah.
And the motion.
The resolution is adopted by motion, right.
It's always good to have an attorney on our side. It's always good to have an attorney.
We're gonna have that as a separate item.
Okay. Under order of business, consideration of calling a public hearing to consider the economic development agreement referred to as Project JP3. Sally?
So you have before you tonight a request to actually call for a public hearing that we would hold at our September 10th meeting, now that we have moved to that date, at 6:15 in the council chambers. And that will be to consider ultimately adopting an economic development agreement for this project, which is a company looking to invest about $11.5 million in new plant and equipment and creating 42 new jobs. The agreement that we will be advertising would ask you to ultimately consider an economic development incentive that would be equal to 50% of any additional avant-garde property taxes that would be due based on these investments for a three-year period, starting in 2020.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing on September 10th, 2018, at 6:15 PM in council chambers to consider adoption of an economic development agreement for Project JP3.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by council? Has the county had this resolution yet?
Yes. The county has held their public hearing.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of award of a contract for the sanitary sewer portion of improvements in the Green Street revitalization project. Sally?
You will recall that we have applied for an ARC grant in the Green Street area. We have been successful and been awarded that grant. So in this year's budget, we have several infrastructure improvement projects that are due to happen in that area to support, basically, some of the recommendations that came out of the Main Street master plan update, dealing with some commercial development in that area, and also some future residential development. This happens to be the sewer line portion only. We advertised for this. We received 10 bids, although four of those were no bids. We did receive six bids. The lowest responsible responsive bid asks that you consider awarding that to Hickory Sand Construction. They are in Hickory, and the total amount is $134,725. Half of that will be grant-funded, and the remainder, which is less than we budgeted for this, can be shifted to other parts of that project if needed as the bids come in.
What's the wish of council?
Move to authorize a contract with Hickory Sand Construction of Hickory, North Carolina, to perform the Bushell Street and Fleming Place sewer line improvement project at a cost of $134,725.
Do I have a second? Yes, I've got a second. Any discussion? Sally, any idea when that will start?
It will be several weeks. We are hoping to get the water portion bids back into award at your September 10th meeting, and it's likely that some of the players will be the same, and so mobilization will probably happen after that award.
Will Bushell or Fleming have to be closed, or just partially?
At some points during the project, yes.
Okay.
And we will notify. I mean, we'll make announcements and things about that before it happens.
Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next consideration of the... Next is consideration of the award of a contract to relocate an existing sewer line at Alpine Mill. Sally?
It's kind of sewer night, isn't it?
It is.
So, that's, that's good. You, you all will recall that for several years now, as the renovations to Drexel Plant 7, which I guess we should start really calling Alpine Mill, we've called it the old Drexel Plant 7 for so long, it's hard to make that change. As the changes to Alpine Mill are occurring, and I hope you've been by and seen the windows being cut in that, and an awful lot of work on the inside, a lot has been done, planning for that project to be completed and ready for leasing those residential units, probably in the fall, looking at November for that timeframe. As that project was being considered, we discovered that there is a sewer line running under that plant, something that you don't always hope for. And as we began looking at the infrastructure in that area, that sewer line obviously needs to be relocated, particularly as we are developing all those commercial spaces and the residential units in that structure. Our engineering staff has been looking and redesigning that. Of course, it goes along the right-of-way of the railroad, and ultimately, we have to bore under the railroad to replace that sewer line. So we have had to get DOT approval, we have had to get DEQ approval, and we have had to get the North Carolina Railroad approval, which has been quite a challenge. We have received all of that approval. We have also received bids. We received, the best bid that we received that we believe to be responsible and responsive is Iron Mountain Construction. They are out of Iron, Mountain City, Tennessee. We are asking that we award to them. This is the labor-only piece, which is $256,950. In addition to that, the quote for the equipment and the, the appurtenances and piping and parts that will be used, you, you see in your information, 57,743, 57,743,34, and then another 7,150. Total project budget, 360, that is included in the budget for this year. So we would ask that you consider awarding that so that that work can get underway, and hopefully, we will be done with that by the time the rental units are opened up, although this shouldn't affect anything regarding that.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to authorize and contract with Iron Mountain Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $360,000 to perform the Alpine Mill sewer line relocation near downtown Morganton, North Carolina.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Apparently, in many years past, things were probably done in a more simple fashion than maybe that Philip Plakado would allow it today. Since, since, as a matter of fact, this building got built on top of a sewer line, which is certainly, I think, would be unheard of today. And I'd hope we wouldn't allow it to happen today. So, you know, as a result of that, this incident of locating the building on top of our, of our sewer lines is gonna cost the city $360,000 to get it corrected now. So, the old times were, the good old times, weren't they?
If Philip and Brad allowed that today, Philip and Brad may not be working here anymore.
And unfortunately, this is not going to be the only incidence of this that we're gonna talk about tonight.
We're gonna talk about this again tonight.
And we're just getting started, folks.
We are. As a small consolation, since we are doing this work, we are, are upsizing and upgrading the line. So obviously, as, as more development is being planned, as we're looking at opportunities in downtown, we are taking the opportunity, when we're correcting this, to put a line in place that should hold additional capacity, if that's any consolation.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of a resolution authorizing a grant application from the North Carolina Appalachian Regional Commission, the ARC Craft District.
I think we skipped one. I think we skipped the storm drain.
Did we miss? Oh, that's right, we didn't want to miss one.
No, we don't want to miss that one.
The consideration of award of contract for South Sterling Street storm drain repair and approval of the budget amendment. Sally?
So Chapter 2.
Okay.
We're not talking about sanitary sewer, but we're talking about storm sewer. As you all are aware, also, again, in the area, as you go down toward the railroad tracks and, and you're looking at South Sterling Street and South Green Street in that area, we have another situation where there are several buildings that were constructed over some storm sewer lines. And, and you see on, on the map there, the red line for you. You'll recall that the church has had some issues with both of their buildings sitting there. And for quite some time now, we have been working with them and trying to identify what needs to happen, how it could get corrected. We've had plenty of meetings out at the site, and we've had North Carolina Department of Transportation involved, because as we look at all the streets in downtown Morganton that are state streets that actually drain to this area, and the runoff goes here, we realized that they needed to be our partners in this project. Hopefully, the same situation would not occur today either, Councilman Fleming, but back in, in the 60s, it did occur. And so we have storm drain lines that run under buildings. The proposal before you is to reroute and upsize the drainage line that is going in this area, to grout fill the line that would still sit under the buildings that exist there today. The total estimated cost for this project is $755,283.32. That is based on taking bids. We did our bids based on a per diem amount. Max Presswood was the lowest responsive bidder at $4,500 a day for the labor portion, equating to $202,500, a maximum of 45 days. And, and that is, we believe, ample time, and also, he believes ample time to get the project done. In addition to that, again, there's piping and other appurtenances that have to be purchased. And, and you would see there, we're increasing the pipe size to a 60-inch diameter storm drain pipe. This is going down toward the railroad and, and then going into what is the existing culvert down there as it exists today. And I think we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. The good news is that last Thursday, at the DOT board meeting, they approved a $350,000 reimbursement participation to the city of Morganton for this project, recognizing their, their part because of the state streets. Would ask that you consider budget amendments, and at this point, we are talking about doing $150,000 out of our Powell Bill fund balance, and then the state appropriation of 350, asking that you consider budgeting to borrow 255,300, which gives us our total, we may spend less than that, out of our Capital Reserve Fund. And then I would recommend that over the next five years, whatever that total ends up being, that we pay that back to that Capital Reserve Fund, and we take that out of our motor vehicles tax that is being used for streets and storm drains, so that we can replace that Capital Reserve Fund to have it available to do future capital projects, which is what it is set up to do. Those dollars came from our original sale of the South Mountain Watershed. And at that time, we set them up as a Capital Reserve Fund so that we could use them to support capital projects and infrastructure repairs.
What's the wish of council?
I move to authorize a contract with Max Presswood Water and Sewer Incorporated to perform the South Sterling Street storm drain repair project near the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks just south of downtown Morganton, North Carolina.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I add just a couple of things, just to...
Yes, you can.
And clarifying for the people at home, the, the map that was shown, the, the red line is the course of where the new replacement line will be, because the current line actually runs underneath all those buildings along South Sterling Street. I would also add that Mr., Mr. Presswood is, who's, you're considering wearing the contract suit, is presently working with, he's the one doing the work at Burger King just below the railroad track, repairing their storm drain problem, which is really this same course drain. Once it goes under the railroad, it goes on down parallel to Sterling. That's really the same drainage area. And, and finally, I think it's only fair to acknowledge the help that our local legislators gave in, in managing to convince the state to appropriate some funds to assist. I think we should acknowledge that.
Okay.
And Sally, I'm assuming that whenever this project is completed, that this is gonna take care of the, of the church's water problem and...
We certainly believe so.
The other businesses down through there, that we're being assured that this is gonna take care of that problem for all those folks down through there.
We believe so.
Which is gonna be in front, located in front of the line now that's gonna be...
Correct, instead of sitting on it.
The drainage line's gonna be placed in there.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
And we would hope that this same situation would not occur today. And in all actuality, this situation not only being under the buildings, but also being somewhat, when it was first put in, a private storm drain situation at, at that moment, we would not accept responsibility for that at all in today's world.
Yeah, we, we realize that, that looking at this project, that there are several sinkholes down through there that this, this drainage problem has caused, along with the church's problem. And that I'm looking forward to this getting repaired, and we're getting those folks down there straightened out.
The area actually has Alder Springs, which is what the apartment building that the senior deaf and blind community built over across from Comma. I mean, Alder Springs actually runs down by this property, so it's...
This was a natural stream.
...that's some natural water flow, we'll say.
Any other further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We need another motion to approve the budget amendments, please.
I move to approve a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the repair of the storm drains on South Sterling Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next is consideration of a resolution authorizing a grant application from the North Carolina Appalachian Regional Commission Craft District. Sally?
Yes, this is yet another ARC grant that the staff is asking for permission to apply for, that is once again being planned to be used for water and sewer infrastructure in downtown. This would be to improve both of those services in the Concord Street area, and would expect that we would know sometime in October of this year if we were accepted for this. If so, then in your 1920 budget, we would be looking at, which will be next fiscal year, we would be looking at budgeting our match. We are applying for $300,000, which is the maximum amount of funding that we can apply for during, in this program. We would be matching that with $319,600. And again, it's for some upgrades to the water and sewer services in that area, and hopefully, looking to provide ourselves with some excess capacity with the push to do housing and some more commercial and some infill development down there. I feel like this is a positive step.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to authorize staff to apply for a $300,000 grant from the North Carolina Appalachian Regional Commission Construction Grant Program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sally, any questions? Sally, is this federal money, or is it North Carolina money?
This is federal money, and it comes with all the strings that come with federal money, and all the challenges in asking for it, and then all the challenges in using it.
Okay.
But we're not proud, and if we can get it, we will accept it and work our way through it. We have actually named Sanja the ARC Queen, because every year now, every few months, it seems that she's finding another one, and we're applying, and we are having great luck, so.
Any more discussion?
Well, I want folks to know that there is a big push for residential down there, and that comes with sprinkler systems on the second floor, which comes with water pressure. So all this infrastructure here supports that, that push for second-floor housing as well.
Excellent. And those are some of our oldest lines that we have.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of Downtown Housing Improvement Plan Guidelines and Appointment of a Review Board, Board. You're gonna talk about it, and then we're gonna have Sharon. We'll ask Sharon to please give us an update.
We're gonna...
Thank you. Well, speaking of housing, I got, I got it, that's fine. Speaking of housing, you folks put $120,000 in the budget for this year, and so we have put together the guidelines to make that project happen. We have taken it from our very successful language that we did in 1999 and in 2000. So what we're gonna do is we'll have an appro, if, an approved downtown HIP loan, I should say Housing Improvement Program, I'm nicknaming it Downtown HIP because it's hip to be downtown. Approved downtown Housing Improvement Program loans are to encourage downtown residential development by assisting property owners in making improvements necessary to meet requirements. And a lot of that is state and local housing and fire codes, which are often a challenge, and that challenge leads to greater cost. The other thing that we're finding also is electrical. We're also focused on the development of market-rate upper-floor housing and/or infill housing projects. So we're not looking at first floor, we're looking at second and up. We only go up four, four levels anyway.
You see the map that was up here at the beginning, that's in your packet, defines the, the smaller area there, which is really the core of the Central Business District and, and decidedly maintaining, being true to having our first floor available for commercial development.
That's right. So if you, if you want to leave it like that for just a minute, what I would now say to you is that that's the establishment of the program. This came out of the downtown master plan as a direct result. They had showed the, the latent citywide demand for housing. The other thing that they mentioned was the need to maintain your commercial rows or first floors. So hence why we have put in here that anything within the pink line that you folks are seeing, that, that is really strong commercial district, and we need to maintain the first floor that way. However, the loans are for anybody within the Central Business District and anybody, and including that pink line. And some, some folks have asked me, well, can I, if I maintain commercial on the first flat floor half, and then make the back half residential, can I do that? The review board can take that under consideration. I'm not closing the door, but I really want you to understand that while we may not have zoning in place for that, that it is critical that we maintain a commercial, commercial usage in our strongest areas, which is really your Sterling Union green corridor there around the courthouse, about a block off each way, okay?
And the blue line represents the Central Business District, which matches the Municipal Service District...
That's right.
...which also is the same as the Fire District.
Yes.
And that's important to note in this, which goes back to, to Councilwoman Cato's, Councilwoman Cato's comments about the requirement for sprinklers and that sort of thing, and some of the redevelopment of that, recognizing that it is a more densely developed area in the Central Business District, and so your fire code and all the Fire District requirements are different...
That's right.
...than if you were outside of that area.
Yep, separation and everything, okay. So in the master plan, just to reiterate, because a lot of people think, okay, really, you really need that much housing downtown? They did this by the numbers. And if you look at just our 2016 numbers, under millennials and the boomers, okay? And then you take 30% of that, and this is only the city population. The gentleman who worked with us on these numbers, actually, you can go and take the county numbers, but we always stayed very conservative, and I'm only looking at the city of Morganton populations. So the potential between the millennials and the boomers is around 1,868 units. What we're saying... What we're saying is that, and that is within a 10-minute walk of downtown. So 10 minutes, so really that is, I'm going to say, what would you say, a half a mile beyond the Central Business District. Okay? But what you have to remember is that we do have some housing in place. So they're saying there's still 1,029 in deficit in downtown housing. This is a national trend. Downtowns are, have come totally back around. People are tired of driving, they don't want the big yard and it expands all age groups. So the other thing that's happening in this area that thanks to you and BDI that we're hearing in the Chamber of Commerce, and that is that our workforce is growing. I read the BDI newsletter that Alan put out, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and they had announced, was it 600 jobs, 600 jobs just recently? Well, folks, these people have to have a place to live. So again, it's a national trend. Especially your young folks, they want to live downtown, they don't care, they don't care much of anything about a car. So even if it's a couple, they're probably going to have one car and make it work. They want to live and, and they want to live where they want to play. So it's something that we're trying to meet the demand of. So again, the general guidelines is that we're going to loan 10,000 per unit at roughly 3%, secured by a deed of trust. Yes, we will take a second on that. Obviously, we could never be a first. Loan to be repaid within five years. Loans are to the property owners only and of course, they have to be within the Municipal Service District. The applicant must start construction within six months from date of approved loan. The last thing we want is somebody to file an application and then sit on it for a year. Again, the objective for us is to get people building homes quickly and we need that to happen immediately, not a year from now. Loans are for second floor and up, again, and/or infill housing. Loan applications will be reviewed by Housing Review Board and applications approved, only the applications approved by the Review Board will then be forwarded to the City Council for consideration. We will ask for, some of the examples of applicant requirements that we're going to ask for is a resume of the developer, property owner and/or retained personnel, a project timeline, project performa, a detailed description of proposed project, including projected residential use, whether it's rental or for sale. We don't care, we just want to know. Other necessary public involvement that may be needed, how they're going to finance it and the budget, the developers' sales financial statement and any baking support that they'll be taking. We recommended the following: one person from the Master Plan Steering Committee, one person from the Downtown Development Association, one person from the Main Street Advisory Board, one resident of the Central Business District and/or Municipal Service District, and one person with experience in the local financial community. I am happy to report that, I believe it was laid before you tonight, that everyone that we ask is willing to serve on the Housing Review Board and that will be Roderick Horton, Charlotte Edson, Keith Suttles, Ray Benfield, and Russ Bray. And so.
Okay. To have a motion to approve the guidelines.
Motion to approve the guidelines as presented for the Downtown Housing Improvement Plan.
Have a motion, to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the guidelines? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we need another motion to actually appoint the downtown HIP Review Board to have such a motion.
Motion to appoint the following individuals to serve on the Downtown Housing Improvement Plan Review Board: Roderick Horton, Charlotte Edson, Keith Suttles, Ray Benfield, and Russ Bray.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor of those individuals, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sharon, thanks for a great job.
So can I follow up to say, so now what happens? So now that we have put this into place, we will then get this ready to roll out. We will obviously put it on our website, send out information. We'd love to have something in the News Herald about it. We'll get Ethan working on it and then we will put in that information when we want to begin accepting applications.
Okay. What kind of a timeline is that, Sally? Within the next couple, three months or?
Yes, I won't take that long. I'm going to guess within the next month or so.
Don't roll it out in the next five days.
When we get it out.
Well, we've got five days.
I've got people asking already.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got people in line, so we'll get it out immediately.
Okay.
Understanding that with their six-month restriction, that they're going to have to be working on a project and ready to go because you don't want to take the money and then not be
Exactly.
Or take that, we won't do the money because it's on a reimbursement basis, but tie up the money
Right.
with an approved application and then not be ready to go.
So council will only get those application which has been approved by the Review Board, correct?
Correct. And then you will hold a public hearing for an economic development incentive on that. You will call for that, just like we did tonight on the JP3 project. We will advertise that, you will hold the hearing and then decide if you fund it or not.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing Resource Institute Incorporated to provide grant writing assistance to seek additional funding to match Duke Energy funding support of public recreation facilities, the Catawba Watery Hydroelectric Plant Number 2232, and a memorandum of understanding with Resource Institute Incorporated. Sally?
That's a lot, isn't it?
It's a lot.
All those numbers in there too. So for several years now, since the FERC relicensing project, I mean FERC relicensing process, we have been working on plans to create better access to the Catawba River and better access to the Catawba River in the vicinity of the water plant and where our weir is located. We have been working with a variety of folks on this and most recently, and for several years, we have been working with Resource Institute to try to make plans to look at the best way to do this. During the relicensing process, we were guaranteed $125,000 from Duke Energy to help fund this. Since that time, Duke Energy has already provided to us and we are holding for this project $139,600. So we got more than the original 125. This is a rendering that staff had done and looking at the location of this and looking at what can be the design of this off the Poplar Street area. In order to get this done, we need additional funding. And Resource Institute has agreed to seek for us another $120,000 in funding in this cycle. In order to do that, we need to adopt a resolution that allows them to act on our behalf with grant writing assistance to seek out dollars. We need to approve a memorandum of understanding between us and Resource Institute that is in your packet and also adopt a conflict of interest policy that is also provided in your packet. For the services that they would provide for us, we would then, if they are successful, provide them with 10% of the grant funds that they are able to secure on our behalf. I will tell you that this 120 with the others, probably not going to be enough money and we're also going to be looking for some additional funds to complete this project.
Um.
And we have Richard Mode here tonight if you have any more detailed questions.
Well, let's get a motion on the floor and then we'll have some discussion. To have a motion?
Motion to approve a resolution authorizing Resource Institute Incorporated to provide grant writing assistance to seek $120,000 in additional funding to match Duke Energy funding support of public recreation facilities, Catawba Watery Hydroelectric Project Number 2232, and approve a memorandum of understanding with Resource Institute Incorporated agreeing to a fee of 10% of grant funding received.
Have a motion, to have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The only question is 10%, if they get a grant, they get the 10%. If they don't get a grant, they don't get anything.
That would be correct. And, and we have a computer-generated rendering that, that we got later today, just didn't get in here, looking back at, at the hand-drawn one that Michael Burley had done some time back. You've, you've basically got a boat ramp and then you have some, some walking and you have some parking located in the area so that you can park your vehicle and then launch your boat.
This will not, this will not be tied into our Greenway downstream, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, this is a comment on, this is a lot of fancy talk to say that we're talking about a boat launching dock.
That would be correct.
So for all the folks that's watching us at home, we might ought to clear that up. It's a good, it's a nice boat launching dock and it's going to have a nice parking area, have a nice access that you can, for all you fishermen, you could pull in there and back up and launch your boat and have a great day of cruising up down the Catawba River and maybe doing a little fishing.
Sally?
Is that not right, Mr. Mode?
We're taking your float boat out.
Your float boat, okay.
Yeah, your float boat.
Sally, part of this is the Catawba Watery Project, which is a part of FERC and some people at home may not know what F E R C means.
That would be the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They are all things electric, all things energy in this country, which takes us right back to the water because you need water for energy.
And the, the relicensing in question was Duke's licensing to operate hydroelectric dams along the Catawba River, including at Lake James. And part of their relicensing was that they had to grant certain funds to counties and towns along the river for recreational purposes and that was the origin of the, whatever it was, 139,000.
And for all of us in here, since we are all Burke County residents, in addition to just city of Morganton residents, Burke County was also a recipient of, of grant monies and, and payments from Duke Energy in the FERC relicensing process. And Scott Carpenter has been using this with the Fontifloor State Trail, the loop trail around the lake and some of that development as well. And I believe that Burke County has been the recipient of almost $6 million for that from Duke Energy. We are sitting at our 139,600. So certainly if they would like to contribute more for this project, we are always happy to.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to recognize both Richard Mode and Squeak Smith, who have done a lot of research and a lot of work with this. They, they work with the institute and I want to recognize the work they've done.
Okay, great.
It's a long time coming, isn't it, Mr. Mode?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We recognize not having the safety issue.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, that was it. Next is consideration of amendment of lease to DeMaros Inc. for the building at 112 West Union Street. Louis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You will recall that last year, after our previous tenant decided to close down the business of Yanni's Restaurant, that the city entered into a new lease agreement with Yanni DeMaros's original, the original operator for a, so that he would resume operating the restaurant, which he did last fall. That agreement, that lease only ran through 2022. It was understood at the time, certainly, that Yanni did not intend to continue the business himself long-term and that he would be seeking partners or purchasers who would be able to take over the business. The city certainly still considers that the operation of a, of a restaurant, of a family restaurant at the, in the city's building there on West Union Street is valuable to the city, it's important to the, the business of downtown and will continue to be. So Yanni has approached the city and indicated that to, to get someone interested in undertaking the business or succeeding him in the business, a longer lease term was necessary. I think many wanted leases of 10 or 12 years even. And the agreement, our agreement with Yanni provides that any assignment of the lease or any change in the ownership of the company has to be approved by city council. So anyway, Yanni has now come to us, we've negotiated the possibility of amending the lease to provide the initial term would still just run through 2022, but there would then be a right in the tenant to extend it for another five years, which would run to 2027. There's also an adjustment of the rent so that it will increase for each year during the initial term and any renewal term would increase $100 a month each year. And the purpose of making these amendments would be to make the lease more attractive to a new partner or business associate or successor of Yanni. He has indeed been in touch with such a person and it is quite possible, quite likely, I'd say, that if you approve the amendment and his deal, he completes a deal, then you will be asked soon, possibly as early as September, to consider a, an assignment of the lease. But all that's before you tonight is to amend the lease, to extend the term and alter the, the rent.
To have a motion?
Motion to approve an amended and restated lease agreement with DeMaros Incorporated for most of the building at 112 West Union Street in Morganton and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute necessary documents.
Have a motion, to have a second?
Second.
And, and to be clear, I should have noted that, that the lease, of course, doesn't cover the whole building because of the city retains that, the front part of the upper floor where Sharon's offices are and that's not changed.
Okay. To have a, have a motion?
Yeah, we both had a motion.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion?
So what we're actually doing is, is approving, the current lease agreement runs for an additional four years from now.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
To 2022 and then he has the option to renew it or extend the lease for an additional five years.
Right, that's what's
Just approve the five-year extension.
That's, that's the big change is that he gets an automatic five-year extension if, if he exercises, whoever the tenant is exercises it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is a consideration of acceptance of a Main Street Solutions Fund grant for a downtown hotel. Sally?
Yes, this is the $200,000 grant that we applied for and, and were awarded that will ultimately be used for the construction of a downtown hotel. We have been waiting for the Department of Commerce to send us that grant agreement because that grant agreement must be executed. We must execute an agreement based on that grant agreement with the sub-recipient. We had hoped that we were going to get this last week. We received it today at 3 o'clock. It is over 50 pages and we are asking that you defer this until the September meeting. At your September 10th meeting, we would ask that you would then approve this grant agreement and also we would bring to you then the sub-recipient grant agreement between us and the sub-receipients. We just feel like it, it needs more time than getting it at 3 o'clock today offered.
I will entertain a motion to postpone the grant agreement to September.
So moved.
Moved to second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, next is consideration of appointment to the Alcohol Beverage, Beverage Control Board. Sally?
Mark Scholler is a member of that board and has been a participant who has been in attendance and participated in a manner acceptable, has expressed the interest and the ABC Board has expressed interest in him continuing to serve. If you all would want to appoint him, this term would be one that will expire August 5th, 2021.
I move to reappoint Mark Scholler to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for a term to expire on August 5th, 2021.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of an appointment, mayor appointment to the Community Appearance Advisory Commission. Advisory Commission. I'm going to make appoint John Cantrell to fill a term set to expire on June 1st, 2020. 2000, yeah.
Yes, June 1st, 2020, and that is...
Is that Bill Almond's position?
That is, Bill Almond has told us that after a long time of serving on that committee, that it is his intent, and he no longer feels like he's able to serve on that, and we will certainly thank him for his many years of service on that committee.
Yes, thanks to Bill. He's done an excellent job, been a faithful member.
Okay. Next on the agenda is appointment, some mayoral appointment to the Main Street Advisory Commission. I move to appoint to the Main Street Advisory Commission Jenny Irwin and John Cantrell for a term to expire on June 30th, 2019, and Keith Suttles to, for a term to expire on June 30th, 2021. Next is consideration of appointment to the Burke Development Inc. Board of Directors. Sally?
Yes, the bylaws, even as amended, say that the City of Morganton shall appoint a total of two directors, one of those to be the mayor of Morganton or the mayor's designee, and then one of those to be the city manager. John Cantrell had been serving in the designee capacity on here and is no longer able to do that, and so you need to appoint someone to take that. I am still serving, if they let me keep coming to the meeting.
What's the wish of council?
I'd like a motion, to make a motion to approve the appointment of Councilman Chris Hawkins as the mayor's designee to the B D I Board of Directors to fulfill a term to expire December 2018.
A motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The pay is great.
Yeah. Are there any issues to come before council?
Yes, we've got this.
One more item. We do. This item was, was sent out in your packets, got put together on Friday, and I need to make a correction. You'll recall that in order to comply with D O T requirements for closing down streets for events and things, state streets, that we, we have to adopt an ordinance, basically, each time we do that. On October 27th, which is a Saturday, Saturday, the Foothills Conservancy is hosting an annual event, and they are calling this event "The Flavors of the Foothills." They have asked to partner with the Historic Morganton Festival Incorporated, and this is going to be a ticketed event, and it will be a farm-to-fork benefit and auction that will occur basically in the middle of Union Street, of West Union Street, in the 100 block. I know that this says that they're seeking to close the street from 5 till 11 p.m. That is actually not true. The event will begin at 5, and they are asking to close the street at 8 a.m. till 11 p.m. before everybody has a moment of panic. There will be communication with the property owners and the business owners. All of them have backdoor entrances, and you will still have pedestrian access, just not vehicle access, and public safety will help out, and we will reroute folks around. They'll come up King Street and then be able to turn back on to Union Street, West Union Street. So, it'll just be that block.
What's the wish for council?
Motion to adopt an ordinance scheduling a temporary closure of certain state highways for a special event.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sally, it is 8 a.m. till 11 p.m. on that Saturday, correct?
Yes, it is. And, and it may be cleaned up and ready before 11, but just to allow enough time to make sure.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else? We are adjourned.